But if he was late to work, I apologize. But it was just, it's been, been really well. Appreciate that and we're looking forward to having our brand dedication, which is at a date and time to be announced. For the details, but thank you again for that.
So Mr. Gibbs, do you have a report?
Yes. Good evening. The 2014 Rod Grant, or otherwise known as the Regular Operating District Grant, reimbursement has been finalized and is currently under review by the state. It is anticipated that the school district will receive the 1.7 million reimbursement by the end of October 2024, pending all levels of approval by the state. The new playground at North Boulevard is
Mr. Gibbs, can you just repeat that we're going to get 1.6 million dollars from the state?
1.7.
1.7, sorry, by the end of October?
That's what we're looking towards, yes.
Great job. I don't think that's something that should be so quickly gone over.
Not only that, I would recommend that you say it like this. 1.7 million dollars.
I actually have a question regarding that too, since it's never been close enough to coming to fruition. Does that go, does that have to go into our capital budget? Is that operating funds? Like where does that funding go?
Part of it's going to go to capital reserve and part of it's going to go into
Great.
That's where that's going to take up.
Awesome, thank you.
Which is my next. Okay.
I'm trying to stop interrupting.
It is a good interruption. Okay, so the new playground at North Boulevard is anticipated to be installed in mid-November by Ben Shaver Incorporated, who is part of the co-op. The cost is $58,121.36. The funds to pay for the playground will come, be derived from the 2014 SDA reimbursement grant. Reconditioning of the ball fields will be completed this Thursday. The new ticket booth at the high school arrived on August 21st and is in place. On August 20th, I met with the architect and engineers regarding the inspection of the building at Seven Industrial Road. The inspection revealed that the building is in good condition and they will be sending it over a complete report for the board to review. On August 26th, I met with the board-approved appraiser, who will be doing an appraisal on Seven Industrial Road. We should have a report in about three to four weeks in accordance with his contract. On August 26th, there was an Oprah request for vendor information as to the turf field maintenance from 2021 to 2023. The request was completed on August 27th in accordance with NJSA 47.1A-1. Thank you.
And one other note, I think it, it fits in with what Mr. Senick was talking about as well as my report, and as well as yours. I think we're doing a lot of things that show that there is close attention to detail, a high level of care in the quality of what we're putting forth for our public, whether it's people visiting or as people work here, some children here are living in greater community. That seems to be a prevailing theme that I'm really proud of. I was talking to Mr. Senick about it at a different time, but somebody coming up to our school today, see how magnificent the Veterans Wall project looks and everything about it. Then there's also the freshly paved park. Very precise detail, love how that looks. Back, you can see the ball fields, doing work there, getting hair cut on Saturdays. My car parents ask, hey, so what exactly are you guys doing? It's nice to be able to say that we're focusing on trying to make things as good as possible while maintaining the high level of fiscal responsibility. So I just wanted to just interject that, I know I'm going way off script, but I, I just feel like embarrassed stating.
Anytime someone gives you 1.7 million dollars, there's, there's a, there's a, an inclination to talk. Okay, next up on the agenda, public comment for agenda items. Members of the public may speak once for a maximum period of five minutes by the clock during this portion of the meeting. The public may speak on any agenda item only during their five minutes, and if a member of the public does raise a question, address that question to the board president and state your name and sign in before we begin. Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close that and move into approval of the action items. And first up is PMC. Mr. Sarisi, will you please move PMC?
I would like to move PMC 40-25 through PMC 50-5.
Second.
Question and discussion?
Yeah, real quick, I just want to say, while it's such a huge loss for our district, Ms. Ringen leaving and having this great rear opportunity, I'm very happy for her. I was talking to Dr. Portis about this earlier on and, you know, hopefully everything's still full circle, maybe one day we are, we're lucky to have her again in our district, but I just wish her the best of luck. She has been nothing but a positive energy in this district since she came in. I remember the day she was sworn in, voted in, and just again, wish her the best of luck.
Definitely second that. Ms. Ringen is a treasure. Too bad that she's got to leave. Anybody else? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Bloomer?
Yes.
Mr. Sarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chanton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. McSweeney, would you please move CIS?
Yes, I'd like to move CIS 15-25.
Second.
Question and discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Bloomer?
Yes.
Mr. Sarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, next up is FFA. Mr. Bloomer, would you please move FFA?
Yes, I lost my agenda here once. There it goes. I'd like to make a motion to move FFA 27-25 through FFA 29-5.
Second. I got one question on FFA 29-25, which is chapter 192, 193. That's related to non-public schools, correct?
Yeah, that's actually one of the discussion items. We need to talk about that too.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Bloomer?
Yeah.
Mr. Sarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo? Mrs. Chanton? Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that brings us to our workshop and first up is PMC, district goals and staffing update.
Well, I'll take care of the district, I'll get stuff updated too, but the district goals are in backup. And I just want to give a really just, I guess, high, high-end overview of what we're looking to accomplish in these three, three goals. Something that we started doing last year is specifically identifying which aspect of the strategic plan is being covered in the goals. That's why you'll see district goal number one, ensuring student success, and then further description. District goal two, ensuring staff success, further description. And then goal three, family and community partnerships. So we're trying to make sure that we treat the strategic plan not just as something that we do every five years and then blow the dust off and do for another five years. Something that really does have direct connection to our everyday operations as well as what we're looking to accomplish. So the first goal, which fits under the ensuring student success category, is to profile a chronic student. It's really profiled by graduate. And this is something that we started working on last year and very quickly realized that we knew it was going to be a two-year goal, we realized it actually be a three-year goal. So this is going to carry into a third year. And what we did for organization purposes, we kept the year one movement, so you could see what we built on and then put year two above that. And what we're really looking to do is continue to make progress on this and be able to share information with the community while actively soliciting information from the community. There hasn't been a tremendous amount of interest expressed about it and that's okay, because where we are in the process. But we'd really like to, through our ongoing communication, really get people pretty excited about this because we want to be able to say, as a consequence of going to our schools, you can expect that your kids are going to be able to do these different things and have these competencies and tendencies, traits, so we're pretty excited about it. We definitely, for year three, we want to align it with curriculum and be able to really make it part of classroom instruction. But slow and steady right now, but I'm happy with how the community's working on it and obviously board members are welcome to be a part of this as well. I know Mrs. Esposito has been in a couple of meetings as well, so. I'm left there any questions about the portrait of a graduate?
Do you see it ever, you see it transitioning into, okay, now we've established what it is. So then the goal's essentially been met and now we move into a phase where like you say, you integrate it into other things, but you've already defined what it is therefore, like at the end of the year two, maybe it's technically met. It's just now we're like integrating it into the rest of the
Exactly. Like you said. Yeah, and actually that, I'm glad you asked that because one of the things we talked about is we don't want this to be a very involved process in which we make a bunch of really shiny, pretty posters and put them up in every school. We, we are going to make really pretty shiny posters and put them up in every school, but if that's your terminal point, to me, you've got this all wrong. It, it has to be that those are a visible tangible reminder of these are the qualities and attributes, competencies we want our students to have. And a reminder to staff members, I've got to push and support our kids to be able to achieve that. And then we, we do need to weave it into our, our curriculum, into our instruction. I'm sure in some way, shape or form, assessment as well, really to guide our assessment understanding. So we want it to be something that, that's deeply philosophical, but also very, very practical at the same time. So, yeah, I think, but by, by the end of this year, we should be at that bright shiny object stage and then, and then year three, we've been advised year three is the tough one. That, that's when we look to really start to, to work it into, to what we do. And what I'm excited about, I admit that, I get excited about everything, but this takes me back to when we first got our hands on the Common Core standards and I was able to see a consistent thread in, from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade and language arts. And I could see these are the different skills kids are supposed to develop as they move. And when you can articulate, these are, these are the competencies. And I know Mrs. Vance spoke about it in her interview, she said that the verbs in the standards define what kids should be able to do. There's a definitive action there and I want, want to align what we developed from the portrait of a graduate to be able to do kind of the same thing. This is, this is the stuff our guys are going to be able to manage, do, articulate. So, yeah, so, and, and just so you know, at the, the meeting that we're having on the 16th, I will present more thoroughly on the goals. We actually have two presentations that night. Mr. Hazler is going to present on our AP numbers, which involves enrollment as well as outcomes. Nominally, I'm a co-presenter for that, but let's face it, it's a microphone, it's Mr. Hazler. I'll take a backseat there. But for the district goals, I think he's going to let me have access to the microphone, which I think our friends at Cedar Crest will enjoy. Maybe I should go first because he's a little more of a dynamic speaker than I am, so I'll take a backseat. Yeah. Yeah, we did well there last year, that was, that was a fun meeting. The second one is ensuring staff success and toot our horn one more time until the next time about the ensuring staff success, that we are the first district that integrated this into their strategic, or into our strategic plan. And I think that that's really important. And so what we're looking to do for, for this upcoming year is really focus on building efficacy and capacity in our staff members, that they feel comfortable and confident being dynamic in their instruction and, and evolving and really looking to integrate data into, we call it a recursive process. If something's recursive, it just means it cycles back upon itself. That we have the curriculum that's going to define our instruction, the assessment's going to tell us, whether informal or formal assessment, how well the students are mastering what's in the instruction, which tells the teacher, you're not just responsible for teaching, you're responsible for student learning. And that should come back and inform your ongoing modifications to your instruction, any, any interventions that might be needed for students, breaking up into small groups. And that should also inform our curriculum revisions, so it is going to put a lot more on Mrs. Vance's plate, which I'm fine with that because I kind of warned her that we were going to overburden her, she seems up to it, so I'm good there, but. Yeah, but I'm, I'm excited about this one too because we really want to get into the weeds deeper for data-driven instruction, help our staff recognize that there are strategies that they could employ that could help to close any gaps that we see. And where she and I do the data presentation, which will probably be coming up second meeting in October thereabouts, we want to give you some really close insights as a board and also as a public into what we recommend based on some of the areas where we don't see ourselves achieving to the level that we expect. You know, what, what does he need to do to help students with modeling, reasoning and that? So there's a lot going on here, but ultimately, at the end of the day, I really want our staff members to feel like that they have ownership and they have agency and that they should be confident to showcase what they're doing and take, take risks. It's really important. And then the third one is about family and community partnerships. And this is one that's been ongoing, we, we've been trying to enhance our communication with the community. And a very nice note, Mrs. Noon pulled me aside the other day and asked me when we were going to start doing the podcasts again. I was like, well, I guess we're doing it pretty soon. But it's nice, I feel like we, we've really expanded our reach to the community through our social media outlets, through our newsletters, through our website, now having an app. The podcast are another good one, so we want to make sure that we're providing messaging across a lot of platforms to reach a wide range of stakeholders and to communicate consistent messages. One of the most important messages is that attendance matters. And you'll notice that little tagline on the bottom of a lot of emails that you're, you're getting from the administrative team. And we, we've really realized that attendance is a major concern. And it's not just us saying it statewide, certainly nationwide too. New Jersey's actually doing better than any other state in terms of reducing chronic absenteeism. Chronic absenteeism, bless you, occurs when a student is absent for 10% or more of days of school. So here it's 18 out of 180. It's a lot of missed time. And, you know, we, we want to make sure that we're supporting our, our students with their attendance, supporting families and also supporting our staff with their attendance. Try, try to just really emphasize, bless you, it's really important to be here, even if you're sneezing, you can still come in, be highly functioning and, and participate. But some of the data that I was looking at from last year was, was pretty, it's pretty high. We had, in, in one of our schools, the principal prepared a report for me and found that 22.4% of our kindergartners were chronically absent last year. That's such an important foundational year, we're used to numbers in the ballpark of about 5%. Can't blame COVID, it's got to be something else at the core of it. And if you guys know me well enough, I couldn't care less about blame, I think blame's stupid. But I, I think it's really important to understand causes and reasons and then what solutions can you put into place to, to address that? So we are going to, we're, we are going to really push the message of get your kids here, they need to be here. You might be able to get a killer deal on a week away at St. Lucia, it can wait. School year's half, you gotta stay with us. Could be that, you know, you want to go see a three-game series that the Colorado Rockies are playing and baseball season's almost over. There's going to be another one next year during spring break too. So we want to just emphasize, we, we, we need the kids here and don't send your kids to school if they're sick, they got a fever, they're throwing up. But if a kid tells you, eh, I'll feel good today, maybe probe a little bit, so. Anyway, so we're going to focus on that and then we also want to continue to emphasize wellness and mental health. We're involved in a, in a project right now with the Rotary of trying to get better communication out about the support services available for students, families and staff regarding mental health. We're going to keep it up with the parent university webinars, we actually have information in this one about the Veterans Wall, which as you could probably tell, I will talk about a lot. Because it deserves that and also really pushing greater advertising for the academy of making sure that people know, that's in our community, but other communities, hey, we've got some really good things going on here. So, and one other thing, and I'm sorry, I kind of glossed over it, is to really focus on appreciation for our volunteers. Parents give a lot of time, a lot of talent, a lot of their energy. And I know with Mr. Nacy on here, we've talked about that with bad parents and their complete commitment to programming to kids. And we see that a, at all the schools, people get involved, we want to make sure that we're giving them some recognition. Your, your best volunteers are those who aren't asking for the recognition, which makes it more fun to give them. So, anyway, so those are the three goals. There's a lot embedded in them, I'm giving a very broad oversight. But I'm pretty excited about it because I think what we're looking to do is, is really support measurable student learning outcomes in ways that, that speak to their, their complete experience for our kids. Like if you have staff who are performing at a high level, you're going to see students achieving at a higher level. If you're able to articulate, these are the things we need to be able to do in order to produce these outcomes, whether it's go to the college of your choice, be able to start employment right away out of school or be a valuable contributor to the military. That portion of graduate is going to help us there and I feel like the greater communication, getting kids into school more often is going to help us, so. That's it, so you'll just act surprised when I tell you all this on the 16th.
Do you think we could find out how many people actually downloaded the app?
Oh, we definitely could. I definitely could, I mean, I'll ask Matt Shay because he'll know for sure.
The app is phenomenal. There's so much information on it. I, I really hope that everybody is downloading.
Yeah. Yeah, because I know with, even with the data that I was getting from my podcast, which, which is unbelievable, how many people were tuning in. But, but there are, with, with Android, it's different from what you're going to get from Apple in terms of, maybe it's, maybe that was like Amazon would tell us, whatever it is, I'm, I'm rambling iniquely here. And so if we could just edit that out of the meeting, that'd be great. I'll find out from Matt Shay, he'll know, it'll be good, yeah. All right. Staffing update, so we are, we currently need a part-time special ed teacher at SJG. We, we had somebody at the altar, she was actually on the early draft of this agenda and then she got offered a full-time job somewhere else. They've signed the contracts, we couldn't hold her to 60 days, so. We currently have that vacancy, I will put it out there, if somebody is a certificated teacher and is interested in getting back into the business, whether you've been home for whatever reason, this is a great opportunity to do it. It's actually, I, I know the schedule this person would have had and it's a great schedule and SJG's phenomenal place. So we do have that vacancy and I'm going to tuck something into my update, I'll probably send him one that tomorrow, definitely by the end of the week. But just letting the community know, when, when we put out the, the call for substitute nurses, we, we had a good number of RNs in the district who said, yeah, I could, I could pitch in. So, yeah, so we're going to use that to help us out. And a nice note too, we've gotten some really good community support about the, the Aviation Academy. Couple of our, our friends in the community have put us in touch with people who could either be in a consulting capacity, we do have somebody who's looking in a, in a full-scale, getting certificated capacity. But it's, that's another program that's been very difficult to staff, it's very specialized, but we have the classes for that program covered, we would just like to have someone stable and in place as, as a long-term solution. Thought we had that last year, it didn't quite pan out, so we're, we're back to the drawing board of sorts. Beyond that, we are doing, we are doing well with staffing. I know you hear the far stories about districts that are looking for 152 people. Thankfully, that's not us. And I think a lot of why we're doing well was evident in this room this morning at 8:00 AM. Or actually before 8:00 AM when people were entering the building. I'm just making sure that people see that they, they are valid and there is a huge value to what they're doing. So, but we'll keep doing that and I think having a really positive community helps us as well. Our community is a good recruiting tool. Told people that's what brought me into this district initially as a teacher and certainly will probably back as a principal. So, anyway, so that's where we are currently with staffing. Hopefully it's, it's pretty, it's pretty flat from here and out. And then I know we spoke about Ms. Ringen's departure, which is going to happen in November. We have an interview planned in place, we're going to follow our process, which is very thorough and has produced outstanding results, as evidenced by the person sitting in the far left. But Mr. Sebryowski prepared a report for me, which outlines the stakeholders are going to be involved in the interview process and the timeline for it. And we'll have somebody, a permanent staff member in place for January, well, first, they'll start January 2nd. But with that said too, we also have a plan about how we're going to make sure we, we ensure adequate support from Mr. Sebryowski at PV through one of our interim administrators, as well as through our supervisor, one of our supervisors volunteered to help out. Because a lot of times I'll say was voluntold, but I did not volunteer this individual, so we'll be covered. That's it.
All right, moving on to CIS, three discussion items, the National Guard Black Hawk helicopter visits at the high school, which is just sounds outstanding. The opening day PD and the plans for the year and then curriculum updates.
And, and in continuing efforts to turn the board meeting into the mic porter show, I'll take care of the first CIS item and then I'll turn it over to Emory. So Mr. Kopp has been working very closely with the military to, to be able to have a Black Hawk helicopter land at our school. And the dates we're looking at right now are October 8th, 9th and 10th. I set up a chain of, choose the word again, stakeholders who can look at all the different things we have to make sure that we have covered, including insurance. Make sure they were notified, we have to coordinate with the fire department, police department. I've already had some conversations with Bill Giuliano about that. But we're, we're really excited about this. We did land the, the state police medevac helicopter here last year and it was, it was spectacular and it was such a great experience for our Aviation Academy students as well as our allied health students to be able to see what this was and you know, you, you think you know how powerful these, these machines are. And when you, I don't think you realize it till you get up pretty close to them, like they're, they're really impressive, so. We're very excited about this and I think this has a nice connection to the Veterans Wall and our work there. And it, it, it's going to be impressive, it's going to be exciting. You might wake it up.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm very excited for it, I'm very excited for it, yeah.
And then I Yeah, I mean, honestly, I think we're probably going to have more kids who want to be out there for it. And the aviation academy is such a niche thing, so I'll, I'll, I'll work with Mrs. Vance, Mr. Hazler and Mr. Kopp on, on, you know, how, how wide open we can make it. But I think it's going to be, it's going to be very impressive. And, and I can tell you, even when, when I was out there, when the state police came, it was pretty cool, so some of our police department came to observe it and we had a few teachers came out and every single person was so impressed. And then to add to it, it's not just that you get this incredible machine landing, but it's also the people who operate it were so generous with their time and so generous with their, their, the information that they possessed, their knowledge, their understanding, fielding questions, just really helped the kids develop better understanding, so I think it's going to be outstanding.
That's on the baseball field?
Uh, no, so it, there's a little patch of field, I guess it would be the JV field is where we had it last year.
JV field, right, okay.
Yep, so.
I didn't think, we can't do that, it'll collapse, right?
Uh, I, I would not recommend it on the turf.
That's, that's what I was guessing. I mean, you can't ride your bike on it.
Yeah, I don't.
Certainly can't ride in a helicopter.
I, I, I don't think it would collapse, but to that point, like we, we don't want bicycles on it, so the idea of a helicopter landing on it terrifies me. Yeah, it's not like we're putting it on.
Like, if you can't wear high-heeled shoes on the turf, you certainly shouldn't land the helicopter there.
We should definitely not land a helicopter on there, 100% right.
Um, and yeah.
In the spirit of that event, we also, is there anything that we're going to do at the full game again?
Uh, uh, we're going to look at what else we can do for, the slute service game is going to be on October 5th, which is very close to that. And so we're going to look to see if we can get anything coordinated with that. In terms of getting someone to, we, we had the, from West Point, we had the jump squad to come in, that was incredible. I would love to be able to do that again. I'm not so sure if they're going to come back for that, but they really liked it, they had fun here, so. It's worth a shot because that, that was really impressive too. Those guys came in fast.
I saw Sam out of a plane, we'll watch them. It's concerning he's going to end up in my backyard.
Yeah, I don't think they were wearing heels, I think we were okay. Yeah. All right, I'm going to, I'm going to pass it over.
Hello, okay. Um, so for the opening PD days, we have a lot going on with really the schedule, helping the teachers have time to adjust and plan for the new schedule changes at the high school and the middle school. So we've provided a bunch of time for them with that, plus they have meetings with the supervisors and the principals to go over and support them in that. We have CPI training going on to support our paraprofessionals and staff members in that at the elementary schools as well as, and that, that's being run by Nikki Schneider and Lauren Habermas in, in district, so. Figuring out the names as we go. And then our supervisor also running different types of rotations around small group and different chain instruction because that's another, that's another strategy that we want to push out and support more, especially at the elementary schools across all the core content, not only ELA and math, but how can they do it in science and social studies as well? So they met today to start that process. And the other thing that we're going to focus on is assessment and how we can work our backwards design with assessment to support instruction better, which should drive our tier one instruction and tier two instruction. I am a big fan of multi-tiered systems of support. And it's something that I Um, it's something that I really did a lot of work with in my last district, so I'm looking to see how it. Um, works in this district and to see how I can support and push that out more, um, so that we're meeting the goals of um as many of our students as we can. So um, besides our P D A today, um, I've started to talk with Matt Shay about Tech Summit. And we already have, that's October eleventh, we have a, a lot of possibilities set up for that day with a keynote speaker and um a couple of other things, so. We're looking for more teachers who want to uh run workshops that day, and we're starting to pull that together, so I'm extremely excited about that. Um, I'm hoping to run my own workshop that day on data literacy, because I really like to learn workshops. Um, so we're gonna talk about data literacy and some of the new math standards uh that go with that. And then we have four other half P D days, which again will focus a lot on the small group differentiated instruction, as well as. Again, giving teachers who are working with new schedules time to keep coming back, how does it, how is it working, what do we need to adjust, and as Dr. Portis said. Um, focusing on that data-driven instruction, having that time to uh look at our data and uh see how we can, again. Tier one, two, three, support, what can we do to uh help the students there? I don't think I have anything else on the P D days so far. Um, and then curriculum updates, um, so. Dr. Sheridan left me a fantastic schedule of curriculum updates, so I will be diving into that. Um, putting out for the writers of the curriculum to come up over the school year, and I will keep you informed as soon as I know as much more of that as possible. Um, and I think that's all I might need to say about that.
Alright, thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Alright, next up is F F A, and there are two discussion items, uh, summer blackout dates for athletics, and then updates on projects.
Um, so I might just um open the conversation, so I definitely, I, the blackout dates have been a.
Blackout dates have been a, a topic of discussion uh over the last um few months, and um. I understand the N J S I A requires one week. Uh, per summer for blackout dates, I know that we give our families two weeks. I just think that the positioning of our two weeks, as in my F F A chair, board member, and parent opinion. Doesn't maybe necessarily suit the aquatic parents the way that, or families, I should say, the way these weeks should be intended. For, in terms of true blackout dates in the core heart of the summer, when there's scheduling being done months ahead of time for vacations. Um. As I was learning this, this was a, you know, one of those scenarios where you don't know what you don't know, um, just became a high school parent. Um, so I, I, I saw the. I saw the um anxiety that it kind of caused from families as it was uh addressed. Um, definitely could have been better followed chain of command on something like this, but. Regardless, uh, it was something that is on people's minds, so I just wanted to bring that to the table. Um, just to have some discussion over it.
So, um, been here a while, and. The original intent of the rule was so that families could go on vacation in the middle of the summer. And if they had two students playing two different sports, if you had a kid on football, and a kid on volleyball, or field hockey and soccer, or whatever. That you could take your entire family and go on vacation. And those dates um originally were in July, late July, early August, I think at some point. Uh, we were going first two weeks in August, and I think that that has become difficult now, because football starts earlier. Kids have to be on the field for nine consecutive. Practices before they can scrimmage, so there's a whole bunch of rules, so I think we moved it back at some point, but um. You know, I don't wanna speak for everybody, or I don't wanna speak for everybody in town, but I think that. Picking two weeks in middle to late July into August would benefit most people, uh, I believe that. Uh, the blackout dates last week were the first week, the last week in June and the first week in July, and uh. I don't think that that's the best choice for, for people of Quonic, I think a lot of people. Aren't going anywhere in June, and they're not going anywhere till at least the fourth of July, so uh I would like to. Pose that we, we look at a later date, I don't wanna be the one to pick the dates, but I think that, you know, sometime after, I'll say July. Fifth, seventh, eighth, something like that, maybe the second, third weeks in July into August. Um, based on, I think that football is when it starts first, so we probably have to go backwards from there. But that we do that, and then I think the most important thing out of this whole conversation. Is that parents know. When the blackout dates are, because it doesn't really matter when the blackout dates are. Because if you, if you planned your vacation, and that's when the. It's not the blackout date, then your kid is gonna get penalized, at least by not being in practice and scrimmages and things like that. So, um. That's just my, my thoughts on it, I think that we should publish the dates so that people know. A lot of the kids that are in athletics coming in as, as freshmen, they have no idea that there is been, is a blackout date thing, so. Just uh, my thoughts on that.
Yeah, so I would agree that whenever the dates are, it should be sent out, so that way everybody knows. I'm, I'm not sure that it's not done now, but maybe it could be done better, it could be done more, but I think that that's the most important thing, like you said, Sam, that. If you are gonna have these dates established, wherever they are, everybody should know when they are, so that way they can plan accordingly, since that's the purpose of having them.
And, and I do also, again, this is just a suggestion, but I think if we, if, let's just say, we're gonna say the last two weeks in July. If Aquatic Township High School should just be the last two weeks in July, filling both. That way, parents don't really have to know about it, um, we don't have to publish it on the calendar or something like that. I don't know if that's possible, I know we have situations like the gym floor has to get done, and there's different things that have, that come to uh. You know, in this conversation, but I think that if we were able to pick two weeks. And go with it, that that would be uh a lot easier for a lot of people, especially people that uh have shorehouses and. Re-up for the next year, things like that, just, it's just a suggestion, you know.
So, can I just, um, so, thank you for bringing this up, I have heard, as a high school parent, have heard. Um, you know, several concerns from, from parents throughout the community, and yes, I always explain to them they need to go through the chain of command. They don't always do that, um, but I'm a high school parent as well, um, and I can tell you, even if. Practices aren't mandated to a certain point until like later in August, and you're going on vacation, and there's some kind of practice game or scrimmage. Your kid is then stressed out because they're missing it, so this causes like a little bit of turmoil. Um, I feel like I agree, I don't think it necessarily has to be two weeks, I feel like if we picked one week. Um, in August, after summer school's over, because we have to remember that we have students who go to summer school, and that's important. Um, I think that would really help just, I think that would be really good for our families. Um. So that's, and I, I definitely, it definitely needs to be communicated, whether it's on calendar, not on the calendar, or someplace on the website where parents can easily access it. Um, that would be great as well. Thank you.
I just uh wanted to throw it there, obviously agree, I think we have to, we, we have a lot of parents. Whether, whether we like it or not, are spending thousands and thousands of dollars um in sports. Training, sports clubs on top of everything else, um, so when mom and dad and the rest of the family wanna have just a week together. We should try to make that uh possible and easy for them. Um, in addition, I, I think there's a couple of opportunities, one, there's not much on the calendar in the summer, so I don't see why it's so hard to, to put it on there. Uh, but also when we have the orientation club. Uh, activities that we have here at the high school in the spring, leading up to, you know, everybody signs their interest. Uh, that is something that should be easily, uh, one of the things on the screen, um, and handed out with every single. Sports club, uh, what the blackout dates are, uh, giving people more than enough time, uh, but I would think by, by February. We should have that up posted everywhere, because then people start planning their vacations early spring. Uh, or, or the end of the year, so, or beginning of the year, sorry.
It is, so, yeah, it's, it's important to note that um whatever date you pick, it's not gonna be manageable to everybody. Um, which I think we're all, well, had enough life experience that we're aware of that, that you could have the most well-thought-out plan, and it's still gonna meet with some resistance. So I do think the communication part is, is the most important component, to make sure that families know in advance. Somebody who generally goes away the first week of July can actually extol the virtues of doing so, so that's a nice time to get away. But I get it, that not everybody wants to do it, having June, early July. Uh, more than anything, um, our, our dates are determined by the availability of gym floor, we do get it. Um, resurfaced, and we get it taken care of by an outside firm. Um, and the gym is actually used quite a bit over the summer, we have basketball camps, we have all types of camps, so that predicates a lot of the timing. For when we can actually do this. Um. There's a lot on the line there, and, and I, I don't know how much people believe it, but they. All of these workouts that are, that are being discussed are all voluntary, if, if a student cannot make it through a voluntary workout, there can be no repercussion. Now, mind you, we went on trips without my son Danny, because it was understood, played quarterback, quarterbacks camp is voluntary workouts, so. I don't wanna start up talking out of both sides of my mouth, we said like, look, if you stay home, you'll have your aunt and uncle watch you, and that's what, and that's what they did. Um, so is it ideal? No, but I could speak to you, that was my experience. Um, yes, we have to make sure that the dates are identical for all sports, football comes back on August twelfth, everybody else comes back August nineteenth for mandatory workouts. You wanna make sure if you have um student plays soccer, but you know, someone else in the chat plays football, you have to make sure that the dates, dates line up there as well. Uh, but um, the, the coaches do have some discretion about also having times at which they do not schedule anything. Because we wanna give them a chance at the end of the year to decompress as well, it's for your, it's a lot of fun, but it's also very stressful, generally by the end of June, people are pretty. Pretty well expended, but um, what Mr. Silopina shared with me is the dates are generally pushed out in October, um, and. We get updates from our buildings and grounds supervisor about when the companies can do the work in our facilities. Um, some work desk tend to book up about a year in advance, so um, we'll, we'll be sure to get the communication out. Um, I'm open to listening to other ideas, like if somebody has a week where you're like, hey, this, this week is like prime, and. And it passes the test of, well, it's not gonna interfere with basketball camp or anything else that needs the gym floor, I'm, I'm wide open to it. Uh, and I defer, obviously, to my athletic director, since this is really his job to manage, but I think it is important to get. Input from the board as well as from the community, and if you do have people who are coming to you with concerns, please route them straight to Mr. Silopina, so this way he can know exactly what's going on. Um, yes, I get it, you guys are very visible in the community, so people see you as someone they could reach out to and discuss these concerns. They've got, they've gotta get routed through the building administration, um, otherwise we have. We have in, inaccurate understanding of what the true level of concern is.
I have a question uh in regards to gym floors, so you said basketball camp, and I. Um, I mean, gym floors, we only have one fall sport that uses the gym, and that's volleyball. And if they had to, I mean, we could send them over to P V school to have practices, gym floors are being done, I, I hate to think that. That the entire fall sports program is being moved because of a basketball camp that basketball is a winter sport. And I, you know, I just think that. I, if that's what's happening, I don't know if that's happening, but I'm saying if we're worrying about ba- a basketball camp, basketball is a winter sport, we're talking about. Getting these kids to be able, and not everybody gets to go on vacation, so, you know, but. Getting these kids to be able to go on a vacation with their family, they literally have four years in high school to be able to do that, and, and nobody goes on vacation together again. And so. To be able to do that in July or early August, we said what, April, uh, August twelfth, football has to be back, so we, now we know. So they gotta be back by the twelve or the ten or something to that effect, but, I mean, to base this on gym floors. If I was a field hockey player, or soccer player, or football player, or volleyball player, I'd be like. What about gym, you know, I'll go practice in my ballpark. Um. I don't know, that's just, just a thought on that.
Yeah, and I, I bring up basketball camp as something that we have also for, for youth groups in the community as well, so. I was, gym gets a lot of use over the course of the summer, it's not just lying dormant. Um, and then as far as, um, all fall sports have access to the gym, so that if there's inclement weather, instead of saying, oh, there's lightning, sorry, can't, can't do anything. Um, they, they have, um, the opportunity to be able to share the floor, but I, I can find out a more comprehensive. Understanding of exactly what activities are using the gym floor and when, I can present that to you, so you can see what the usage is.
It sounds, it sounds like to me, though, it's more of a function of when the gym floors get finished, and, and that's like trying to plan around. We have. This work that has to get done over the summer, and if it has to get done in this time period, wanna make sure that there's no one that's allowed to use the gym floor at that point, you know what I mean? So it seems like if we could, because I'm, I'm trying to look for some kind of. I, I, I guess the word is like compromise, hold on, can I just finish?
Yeah, I'm at.
So I guess, I guess the thing I'm trying to look for is like, is there a set time that the gym floors always do get finished, like, is it always? The last couple of weeks of June, or is it always the beginning of July, or is it like, maybe we could look at that, and then say, okay, since we know it's always around this time. Then we could try and set it based on that, you know?
I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just gonna throw this out there, but can't we just add an additional week in August, do the kids have to practice? I mean, how many weeks of summer are there, ten, eight, nine? Do they have to practice?
These are all voluntary, they, they don't have to.
I, I, but, so I, I get that they're voluntary, but these are high school kids that we're talking about, and this is important to them, and then it causes more stress. At home, in my opinion. I, I, believe me, I had, I, we left our family vacation, so Olivia could come back and go to cheer camp for two days. So I, I understand that, I do what have, I would always do what needs to be done, but we're talking, there's how many weeks of summer there, summer are there? Ten? So we can't take three weeks off for sports? And we can't take three weeks, I'm just, I'm just, I'm not like going after it. Three, like, so then they still have seven weeks of sports?
Well, the state has two, so I mean.
I'm not a, I'm not an athlete, never been an athlete, never will be an athlete, but I think seven weeks of practice is pretty good, I mean, call me crazy.
So, am I wrong? I think maybe it would just be helpful to see the different sports, how many weeks, et cetera, so for example, my child, my child is not a cheerleader. She does something else, they've been practicing for two weeks, so.
Yeah.
So that's just, I, I just think that. There's probably a lot of different moving puzzle pieces here, and just understanding them will help everyone of us to sort of sit down, look at the whole picture, and then, you know. Talk about potential what works for everybody.
That's a good question, Dr. Portis, is the band even uh involved in, do, do they have a blackout week, John? Does the band have blackout weeks, or they just go from last day of school? Cause. In the ninety-five. You got two. I mean, that's what I'm assuming, that's why we're not really including you guys? Now, there's no blackout dates, okay? Right. Mm-hmm, but they don't have any time off, like, man, not man, we don't. If a band parents wanna take their kids on vacations. Okay. Right, okay. Yeah, yeah, well, I'll turn. I don't know why I'm talking to the audience here, but, I mean, basically, if you have one child in band, and one child on, in the sport, and you wanna go away. Yes, right, okay.
So we all, we all agree on that, without a doubt, that it should all align, I think the two things that we, I think Michette said it well, let's get all the information. So we could actually see the whole picture, and then the second piece of it is when we do see the whole picture. Make sure that's communicated clearly to the community, so that they know when it is, whenever it's going to be, you know? And that whole picture should take into account things like all the different sports, as well as the maintenance on the schools that has to occur. So that way we can make sure that we can get our floors refinished and not have to skip out on a year, because some other reason.
Yeah, I think, I think everybody said some good points, right? And I think what it is, it's based on where they fell this year. Was, I guess, right, the first week immediately ending the school, so the practicality of the fact that is a coach really jumping in the first week. Of summer, saying, let's go practice. I think is leading people. I think is leading people to say. This isn't a relevant point where it's blackout because nobody's gonna be there anyway. And that's what it's coming down to, practical alignment. That's, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying for a second. Um, and i- in a way, I mean, I, I don't know of a coach that would just. Say, okay, we ended school at nineteenth or whatever graduation was, I think eighteenth and nineteenth this year, twenty thirty, I think it was that Monday. We're back at it. I don't, that's gonna be blackout regardless, just naturally. You know, that's what I'm, that's where I'm like talking about. Well, you can't say that because you don't know that. I'm just saying in.
Wow. I, I'll admit, I've gone on vacation that week in June. Am, am I an outlier? Like, am I? Am I somehow defective? Cause my family's done that. Like I, I'm, I'm. So people go at all different times.
I think we got a plan. Uh, let's move on to the project updates.
The updates on the projects, uh, for the new windows at the high school. Um, we're anticipating them starting the end of November. Uh, obviously they have to coordinate not being in the building when students are there. Uh, so they'll be working nights and weekends and that's all been incorporated into the plan. Uh, it should take probably a good month to get all the windows in. Obviously we're coming into a cold time, time of the year, so it will be a little more difficult, but we'll get it in. Any questions on the windows?
When'd you say they were gonna start, Gordon?
We don't have an exact date yet, but probably the end of November, beginning of December.
They're going to, I guess for, they're not gonna leave, they're gonna replace windows as they go. So there's not gonna be any indicated, any reason to temporarily. Secure openings in the middle of like heating season, right?
No, comes out, goes in. That's simple. Okay. Yeah. Any other questions on the window? No? Okay. The new playground, actually, uh, I talked about that a little bit in my business and history's report. Um, it's anticipated to start sometime mid-November. Um, so hopefully that will be done. That should be very quickly. There was some concern at the last board meeting whether the old one had been removed or it's going to be removed and it has been removed. So that's another concern. Any questions on the playground?
This seems cheaper than the one at, I shouldn't say that. I shouldn't say it like that. It's expensive. This. Purchase seems more efficient than the one that we received for Hillview. And it's a similar size playground. So it seems like it's, we got a couple bucks off.
Yeah, it was a good deal.
Yeah, it's a good deal. Very efficient.
We negotiated a good deal. Okay.
They using a union to install this?
Sure.
Okay.
Any other questions on the playground? No? Okay, the big topic is, uh, really the, uh, the board, the new board office and classrooms. I also mentioned in my, uh, board secretary's report that, uh, I had met with the architect and our engineers. We're gonna provide a report to the board as to the condition of the building that we're looking to purchase. I also have met with the appraiser and I actually went through the building with the appraiser and he was quite impressed with the building because it is in very nice shape. Uh, once I get all that information, I'll be able to put together a plan, an action plan. Uh, before putting in any kind of negotiation. Because obviously I need numbers. I need to figure out where it's coming from and when we're going to buy it. We have a problem in buying it through our capital reserve and that we cannot buy it this year. It has to be built into your budget in order to purchase anything out of capital reserve. So I have a, an idea how to negotiate that. And I've also gone over it with our attorney. I know Dennis actually. And, uh, he was in agreement. I went over it with our auditors and they see, they said that's okay also. So once I get that information, I'll put together a package for the board. And we can take a look at it before I start the negotiation process. I do know that he, or the, excuse me, the owner, the current owner did purchase the building a little over two years ago for about two point five, five million. He wants two point eight five. So look, he's looking for a three hundred thousand dollar increase in this purchase. Is that high? I don't know. That's what the appraisal tells us. Obviously we cannot buy it for more than what the appraised value is. So that appraisal is key. Yeah. So we're working on that. My idea is to keep the tenants in the second floor as long as we can. Till we get the third floor totally finished off the way we want it and slowly weed them out. I think twenty twenty nine is the last lease. On that building. So that'll work out for us.
So what is our overlap timing of admitting to this? And then that becomes available and saying. Okay, that's better. But we're now in a, in the process, like what, like, once we. Once we commit to that building, that's done.
That you're talking about. Okay. Um, uh, my last email and I shared that with the board. Um, they're not interested.
Currently.
Currently, right, right. If that becomes available, that would be a whole nother issue. Because that would have to go out for referendum for sure. Yeah, yeah.
You gotta build a building over there.
Right.
Here we actually have a building built. So I mean, it would be years difference.
And.
And I was just gonna ask, when is the date where, uh, we have to leave the post office? What's the date?
It's February twenty twenty six. And they are not going to negotiate as far as us buying the, the building. So they, they want the building. They want the property. So they want us out.
Can I ask a, oh, sorry, go ahead. Two, you're done.
Go ahead.
Right. Um, just thinking about the location of where it is on like the far southern end of town. Do we know how much of the like residential area of town is? Far enough away that would we have to bus students there?
Most likely we'd have to bus students there, yeah, for safety reasons.
So that's.
We're only talking four classrooms to start, three to four classrooms to start. Uh, I'm gonna have the architect draw, draw up some plans to give you an idea as to what we could do. Obviously the board makes that final decision. Um, but yes, we, I would surmise we would have to bus some of those students. Any students who live within two miles, they don't get bussed unless they're special education.
They wouldn't, but if they're beyond two miles, we have to offer.
Yes.
Bussing, like parents don't have to use it, but we have to offer it.
Correct.
Um. And we're talking about preschool age kids.
Well, not for the third floor. You cannot put a preschool on the third floor. There was a law that was recently changed. Which stopped that. And I had a long conversation with the county BA. And she flat out said, you cannot do it. And she studied the law and I said, okay, it's the law is the law. So. We're looking to put, uh, upper grades just on those three or four classrooms to open up some classrooms in North Boulevard. Um, for more preschool. Cause right now we're losing about two hundred thousand dollars a year. And students that are waiting to come in.
Yeah.
That's a lot of money to lose. When we leave the post or actually starting fif- January first, twenty twenty five, we're losing our rent. From the post office for the property that the building is sitting on. That's fifty five thousand a year. So now the rent we're gonna get for this new building is about thirty thousand net, what I've seen so far. So I have to look at the numbers even further. Obviously my appraiser is also looking at them. So that's gonna be factored into the purchase price.
So, okay, I'm sorry. Then I got lost along the way. So we're talking about four classrooms to start, third floor only.
Right.
But upper grades.
Right.
So a very small subset of students, what about like assemblies? Lunch, reset, like.
Well, those things will have to be taken, obviously. I mean, we're still at the very beginning stage.
Right, okay.
And unfortunately there aren't a lot of properties in town that we can choose from.
Sure.
You know what I'm saying? So we're.
Says everyone who's looking to move into this town.
Exactly. What in each case would you consider, uh, be going there?
I'm thinking academy students, yeah, older students. But obviously it's up to Dr. Fordus.
Yeah, one, one thing we did talk about too is, um, it. It doesn't require Nostradamus to anticipate that there's gonna be huge spike in the number of students requiring services in the age eighteen to twenty one. Uh, we're seeing spikes across the board in special education enrollment and it's showing no signs of slowing down. So, um, one thing I have discussed is the possibility of having an eighteen to twenty one program. This is still in the very speculative stages, but up on that third floor. Uh, and that will free up some space in this high school as well. So if we did want to expand anything with academies. Or general programming, uh, we could do so. So I think. An eighteen to twenty one could serve the needs not only of students within our district, but also allow us to pull in students from other districts and. Uh, but you, you guys have seen some of the numbers for added district placements. They're astronomical and tho- those aren't slowing down. Um, and so if we can find ways to help not only ourselves by housing such a program. And I'm not making this sound like it's a fait accompli, like there's a lot of work to be done to determine if it's to be possible, but. We could bus students in neighboring districts as well. That could be a great source of revenue. Um, and it, it really helps you have a more effective program. So, yeah, so their idea is kicking around. I mean, one, one thing that this building has, I mean, the location's not the best. It's just the fact that it's in. Our zip codes and, and it's available, makes it very attractive. But it has something that we just can't find anywhere else in that space. And, um. When, when we were talking to Frank, the architect about what we could do classroom wise, he was looking at the wall and saying, oh, this, this is easy work. He's like, you, you're just telling me like. What size you want. He's like, and I can tell you exactly how to shift the movement. Knock things out. Obviously much broader scope of a project, but we have a one floor high school. Like what have we ever talked about going up?
The problem with going up is the more space that you have, we have to provide parking. We're limited on parking now. You go up, where are you gonna park?
Right.
No, I think. Yeah, don't think of that. Never be locked. Right.
And, and you, you'll see it, um, as a high school parent now, like the, the layout of this school is, is not efficient. Uh, it's, there, there's a lot of wasted space, wh- whether it's the courtyards that have no real egress, um, but the. I, I, I would have liked to have seen it laid out differently. And even like how PV has portion that has a second floor. It's great, great space. S G's got that little portion. I think that that would have been great, but it, it, I think it's gonna be relegated to the, would it could have showed up as opposed to something that's actually feasible.
And then just to piggyback on that, when we got the solar panels on the roofs. And we have, we have solar panels on the roofs in a lot of places. And then additionally. The structure for a two-story building is different than a storage structure for one-story building. Like for instance, the library is like wood frame, right? And the wood bears on, in, in most cases, like the, the side walls. So I don't necessarily know if they're adequate to go up two stories. Typically you'd have like a structural steel frame, then you go up as high as you want, but. In my opinion, we should knock something down, build something new, but.
Is there an elevator in this building?
Yes, there's no.
Tim, you went here, right?
No, he means.
No, he was.
No, I meant the new book.
There is an elevator here. It's right next to.
Any other questions?
Uh, cou- couple of questions about, so. We're considering putting classrooms there as well as the preschool?
Yeah, so it would, we can't, just to summarize what, what, uh, what we're talking about. So we cannot put any pre-K on the third floor. Um, and I, I tried to make the argument that the first floor is essentially a basement that's not fully underground. Um, so the second, the third floor. I contend it was actually a second, because there are only two usable floors. Um, I think the county found my argument amusing at best, uh, before summarily dismissing it. So, um, essentially that, that third floor, which is again a glorified second floor, has to have another view. So the, the office space is gonna be great. It's gonna open us up, can even move supervisors potentially in there, great space, high school, middle school. Uh, but we would look to use half of that third floor for classroom space. It's, it's pretty big. Um, and so that's like an, an older program, uh, would be well suited because you wouldn't have to worry so much about. Uh, recess, like we would still have students doing, like, you know, visits around town where they're able to do onsite learning experiences. But I, I, I'm, I'm hooked into this eighteen and twenty one. It doesn't have to be that, but I think that would be a great thing to be able to house. And I mean, and I don't miss this, you know, speak to this more. She's observed. You, you're, you're gonna see just an explosion in the need for these programs. And I'd love to be on ahead of them. And then second floor, which is glorified first floor, uh. That, that we could dedicate fully pre-gauge. We gotta make sure that tenants currently occupy the office space there.
And the classrooms, it would, it would just be for the older. Eighteen, twenty one.
The, the, yeah, the upstairs. I'm not even gonna use the, the floor numbers because I'm confusing myself as I say it, but. The, the, the top floor would be, yeah, exclusively for the older kids.
So, I'm sorry, when we're looking at the preschool rooms, are we, um, taking into consideration the PSA? If we ever get it?
Yeah.
And what, because within five years, we have to universally educate ninety percent of our students. So like, how many classes would we really technically need?
We're, we're gonna need a lot. Um, and, and the great thing is, you know, pre, pre-K requires a lot of space, nine hundred, nine hundred fifty. Uh, which, when you think about it, it's a big chunk of space. But we, we'll be able to configure things. So we're, we're confident we can get four classrooms in at least.
Pretty positive with the eight of seven fifty square feet and a bathroom. I don't think the bathroom has to be in the room, but it has to be right there.
Like, line of sight, it has to.
So, um. Just because if, if and when we are up for that, hopefully sooner rather than later, it's a very quick turnaround. Not only is it, it's a super. Quick turnaround and it's also a lot. So if we're planning, I'm just putting it out there because we're, I'm going through it right now. Or my district is going through it right now. It is a huge undertaking, but it is phenomenal aid.
Yeah, and we're, we're gonna, actually, I'm gonna include something in, in one of my forthcoming updates and it should actually be my next one. Um, to remind parents about the availability of free reduced lunches and, and I'm glad that this actually gives me an opening to say it publicly as well, but like. If you're experiencing any type of, uh, temporary financial instability and there's a way that we can help, like. The feds have this in place to help people and kids don't get. You know, a lunch with a big scarlet free or reduced, you know, there's no F, there's no R on it. You, you get a lunch and, and all that is kept confidential. But, but I bring this up because it's a program that I feel is, is underutilized. And if, if families are experiencing food insecurity right now. That is gonna directly impact kids' ability to learn and to wanna come to school. And I, I'm bringing it up in regards to FFA because. The grant money is largely based on. How many, what, what, what portion of students you have who are receiving free reduced lunch service. So. I'm, I'm putting it out there that it, it really does help the district if we have families taking advantage of something that. Our tax dollars are paying for it. It's in place as a support and we know ideally we want it to be a temporary crutch to help people. Um, so they can really get back on their feet, but it's there. And again, there's no stigma attached to it. So. I do want to get the word out about that because, uh, it, it serves multiple, multiple benefits.
There anyway, Gordon, is there any way we could go and visit the property? I know we have it like purchased it or, or praised it or. Is there any way we could just go see the inside maybe so we could get a good idea of what?
Yeah, just, uh, let me know when you wanna go see it. I'll take you through. Realtor said that I can go anytime. If anybody just goes, I mean, that might be a little shady to them. So, um, yeah, just, just let me know when you wanna go and I'll, I'll be there for you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? No?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to policy, four discussion items, the homework policy, the duties of the president policy, updating the policy master list and then potential self-help policy.
Do you wanna take more?
And it really was being self-deprecating when I said the Mike Portis show. But the homework policy is one that, uh, we spoke about. In a couple of meetings as something that we'd really like to have passed through a committee of, um, comprised of administrators. And I was really happy with how the process unfolded. Um, Mrs. Vance Gold was able to be a part of committee that met for that. And, uh, we, we had what I, what I felt were very, very good intellectual arguments that were focused on. Generating a document that could convey an accurate philosophical position on the importance of homework while also affording us the wiggle room. Um, things are gonna change through the years and we want to make sure that the, um, building level principals and supervisors and directors are able to push out. Information that's accurate for that time and speaks to, these are the expectations for this year. And that's. That's why I bring up that there is something in, in one of the paragraphs, uh. About how there, there will be information in the, in the handbook or shared out with students and families. Cause I think. About how there there will be information in the in the handbook or shared out with students and families, because I think that that's very important. That's the third paragraph, Department of School Guidelines will provide specific details about the importance of homework and determining students' grades. And we wanna make it clear too, um I I I was rapidly opposed to the five percent rule um for a number of reasons, you've heard most of them. But I do feel like homework should factor into grades, if it kids take it more seriously if it matters, but it shouldn't dictate students' grades. If you've demonstrated outstanding performance on major assessments, but you simply don't do your homework. There shouldn't be much of a penalty for that, because clearly you've demonstrated mastery, your your grades should reflect that. Nevertheless, so what we what we put forth, um and this went through some very close readings, um. I was impressed, Mrs. Vance Gold called me out on a floating adverb, and I hate adverbs, so I was impressed with that, very well executed, uh but. We wanted to make sure that this was a one pager, that it was precise, um and that it stated something that was that was clear. But also didn't necessarily pinion our our staff members, and we also wanna make sure we include something about the. Homework free weekends, uh for this year, we're looking to do it for Thanksgiving and Memorial Day. No argument here with Thanksgiving or Memorial Day, uh but also, it it is important to note that. There there are gonna be different expectations, most likely for AP, that that's a college level course, and hate to say it, with when we start school. We we open our doors on Thursday, kids in Brownsville, Texas will have four weeks under their belt in their AP classes at that point. So, anyway.
So.
Go ahead.
I I think this is great, I love this, um I know that that administration works super hard on those two long weekends, so I really appreciate that the high school level. Can we maybe think about. Challenging to maybe do a homework free weekend a month at the elementary school level, or like even middle school where they're they're not. Worried about AP classes and those types of things, where the kids really can disconnect a little bit more, so maybe it's. One allowance for the elementary school, something a little slightly different for middle school, and then high school has those two. Weekends, which then also the other schools will have, so the whole families, regardless of school level, et cetera, have no homework Thanksgiving and Memorial Day.
Yeah, I could definitely bring it up, that is that something that that you've that you've found that that's been a significant disruption? And I realize it's loaded language, say significant, but that ha- has the homework. Been onerous from either your firsthand observations or conversations you've had?
So. Some, I mean, so obviously, it's very child dependent, right, like some kids, they sit down, we do the homework, it takes them four seconds and they're done. Other kids, they sit down, the same homework will take them four hours, and it's it's anguish and it's torture, so I feel like. Through my experiences and and what I've heard over the years is, sometimes the kids don't get, those children who have, who struggle a little with getting homework completed. May not get their Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday homework done, right, and so come Friday, they're then trying to play catch up. And so they they take it home, and it's a struggle Sunday act. So maybe if we can just sort of be cognizant of that, or I I I don't, I'm sure that there's some sort of. Like. I need to do my part. Or some sort of um creative solution. Um but just to sort of care for some of those, and the fact that the homework now doesn't dictate the grade, I think that's that's a huge step in the right direction for those types of. Kids who struggle that way, um. But yeah.
Yeah, and so it's just something I wanna really point out, well, two things, one directly connected to what you're saying. Um the other is, you really want homework to be done by the student, i- if if a kid is really struggling with being able to complete something. That's okay, because that gives the teacher accurate data on where that student's understanding is. And as a parent, I think there's a natural tendency to to wanna help our kids, and. I I I was a tutor for years, and I used to struggle with that all the time, is am I going too far in in the assistance I'm providing in this particular. You know, essay, college application essay, so because you want the work to be authentically the kids, but you also don't wanna see them losing their minds, so. I think it's important that 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 homework is taken seriously, and students put forth their best effort, but if I've given you three math problems. And you can do one of them, and the other two are just beyond you, that gives the teacher phenomenal. Quantitative data about what needs to be re taught, or how to how to work with groups in class. And the other thing I think this is really important for parents, um is that the homework battleground is a brutal place, and it it. If you have a student who is struggling, who is incredibly resistant to homework. There's no shame in putting a post-it note on the homework, or even writing on it, because sometimes kids are savvy and know that they can remove post-it notes. Say, we worked on this for twenty minutes, didn't make any progress. That you're gonna have to say like, sorry, like that, I know that's hard to do, um but.
So it it's very hard, and and I totally understand what you're saying, and you're coming at this, I feel like from the point of view of an educator, right? And so somebody like myself, or some of my friends who are not educators, and don't understand education like that. Will sit with our children for hours and tears to try and get them, to try and teach them to YouTube videos, to. Get them to where we think they need to be, even if that's not beneficial to them, because otherwise, we feel like we're not doing our part as parents at home. To get the work completed when they get it.
I think there's a really good. Messaging that can come out of this, and 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 again, like. My phenomenal podcast viewing numbers maybe support that. Okay, aside, but like, to be able to just say, like, as as an educator, as parent, granted, my kids are older, but. A- and and as somebody who has a pretty, pretty deeply grounded understanding of this topic. Like, they almost give people permission, if if your kid is is losing his or her mind, shut it down, you know, and and you know. Whether it's a brain break, say, look, we're gonna work on this for ten minutes, we're gonna go out in the driveway, we're gonna, we're gonna shoot hoops, or or you do something different. And then we're gonna come back to this, or just say, you know what, the last three hours of my life have been sheer unadulterated hell, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut bait, like. It it's real, it's really important, and I think we can reinforce that message, and it can't just be coming from me, like, I think from. From teachers, from the administrators, it's good back to school night message to them, like, o- once you hit. A- and and Mrs. Vance Gold probably speak to you better than I, but like, I felt like with the little guys, I I'm like with math, once you hit minute thirty one. You you're beyond the point of return, like, you're just not gonna, you're not gonna get return on that investment, so it's just best just like done. You don't wanna condition the kids to realize, like, torment, wow, thirty minutes, and then I'll I'll do my math homework, so there's. There there's a lot to consider, but just for parents to understand, like, you're not a bad parent, if if you if you shut it down, you're actually doing great.
I I get it, but when your kid's sitting there crying and and. You, I mean, I'm sure everyone's been through their own version of this, um but I agree, it's great messaging, and maybe, you know, the principals can. The elementary, middle school principals can, and and there are, you know, weekly newsletters that go home, um just to like reinforce. I know for some kids.
I think that there is an idea that homework. Homework should re reinforcement, it shouldn't be parents teaching the kids the lesson, and if that's the case, there should be an email. Sent out, like, my kid just didn't get it, so I think that maybe that needs to be communicated a little bit more as well, because it's difficult, listen, I. I'm an educator and did not do homework with my kids, because it was, it was not a good experience for anyone, so, um. You know, but I think that just, I I think you're right, I think going out in the newsletter would be a good idea.
I'd like to come at this same idea from another side, because I really appreciate the advice they're giving to parents in this regard. Um I do get the sense that some of those tears and frustrations on behalf of the students are because. There is still a mentality of homework being graded. And homework being an expectation, and it's a it's a word in here that I'm going to challenge us to keep thinking about. Um of an assessment of student performance, and so the student who is struggling. Is feeling inadequate, because they are going to go into that class tomorrow, having not performed to the expectations of the teacher. So and I'm not saying that that is universally what's being put on the students, but there is still that mentality. I think throughout our district, I I think I see it. Uh because I have a high achieving middle school, I think you see it most in high achieving students especially, and they tend to internalize that a lot more. So I think that's something we should watch for, um to that end, in the draft of the homework policy. There um is in the first paragraph. The sentence I would like us to keep looking at, especially in relation to a lot of the changes that are in the last paragraph, which I really like. Um we have in here, based on educational value of engaging in ongoing assessment. The board supports faculty efforts to maintain consistency and quality in providing homework assignments that assess student performance. But then later, in the end of the policy, and actually, prior in that paragraph. We say that homework is the opportunity to practice, and we've eliminated and perfect, which I'm very pleased to see, um. But the last paragraph talks a lot about students being able to assess their own mastery. While helping teachers determine the level of understanding and ability to apply their knowledge, so I would like us to keep looking at. Those ideas next to each other, and are they? Are they complementary, or are they a bit in conflict if we're talking about homework as ongoing assessment of performance versus practice? I can put it in an email to you.
No, it's fine, I'm jotting on notes, and and though I hate listening to these, because I I think my voice makes me sound like Keanu Reeves, you know, like, listening to these meetings, true story. But.
It's basically the third sentence of the first paragraph.
Yeah, so we.
In relation to, I'm sorry, it's not the last paragraph, in relation to the third paragraph as a whole, I think they're they're a little bit in conflict there.
And just quickly, scroll down to the um the the bottom, so it's page four. Because that's actually the one where we cut out, we we cut out the word.
The wrong one, okay.
Sorry.
Good, and you've already done what I asked you to do.
We read minds.
I'm sorry, draft for editing, okay, excellent, um the kind of separately, this isn't, might not necessarily be a part of the policy. But I did also wanna comment on um our use of tools like i Ready and other sorts of. Responsive systems that are often being used for homework, um and making sure that. Particularly for students who are getting the concepts, those systems continually provide them with more challenging work as they do well. And making sure that we're not basing grades on those necessarily, because if a student is. Exceeding their grade level ability and are being given questions that are one or two grades above their actual grade. And then not performing at mastery, we we wanna make sure students aren't being penalized, or. Feeling like, again, like they're not achieving where they need to be, they're being given work that may be two grades above what their peers are learning, so. Just making sure that that's balanced as well.
Yeah, and 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 that's, um I just wanna point something out, and I had a earlier had a conversation with Mrs. Esposito, I think it's really important to. To focus on this idea that when we talk about ongoing assessment, we're not talking about ongoing testing for a grade, we're talking about assessing. Where kids are, and that's what I like about a tool like i Ready, where, yeah, you do see the progressively more difficult questions. I had a teacher almost in tears when we were first piloting that program, she's like, my kids got destroyed on us, like, what do you mean? They got the first three right, and then they got the next two wrong, like, that's fine, so what the system's figuring out is. All right, so you got these first three right, let's try two grade levels above, and then and then it it adapts, it's adaptive assessment. Which is, which is wonderful, but if if I get, yeah, if I get like a sixty eight percent, because the adaptive technology is testing to see how far I can go. There there's an issue there, and and it is really important that we wanna be able to assess, in other words, to determine. Where where are the kids who are seated in front of us in the classroom, so that we can modify. Instruction to to meet them where they are, I know Brian, you want to chime in.
Yeah, and similarly, making sure that students understand that, so they're not in tears over the i Ready problems that are two grades above where they are supposed to be.
It's actually funny you bring that up, because I have a kid that'll do i Ready, like, at home, and then being like, you know, he's in he's in fourth grade, will be in. Middle school, doing algebra, and be upset that he doesn't get it right, because he went from, and he just keeps going and going and going until he gets it wrong. Um so I think that's it's very wise what you said, Megan. As far as the homework policy, I thought it was good, because I think it is good to have the homework be. Practice, like it says in the policy for concepts that they're learning in school and reinforcement, because I just judging from my own experience. That's how I tend to learn, I might not get the concept, I might get the concept in class, but then when I go home and do the homework, it reinforces it, so now when I come back the next day, I. I I know it better than I understood it the first time when I saw it, um but I also think it's important too for the teacher to be able to understand. Where the students are having issues, so that they can differentiate their instruction.
And I do see now the performance was replaced with understanding, thank you, that's awesome. I do.
That might have been a memory.
The sentence that's highlighted, I do think that that's a really great sentence, that really will speak to differentiating homework. So thank you, um and I, Dr. Portis and I did have a brief conversation about using the term assessment. And if we could define that a little bit, I think, um within the policy. A little bit more.
Yeah, I'm jotting that down. Yeah, and something that that. I I I did share with the the committee, and they really were outstanding, they were very focused, and it was cool, like, when I looked through my minutes from the meeting. Everybody was there, um made a significant contribution, so it wasn't just like one or two people speaking, it was it was all seven people in the room. Uh and they they were they were willing to argue and bring forth ideas, but um I did tell them that. One of my agendas as a as a. Well, an English teacher, but also somebody really thinks can't stress literacy skills enough, because I wanna emphasize the importance of reading. And and all that reading gets is. Mentioned as part of a series of three items, but it's it's in there, and it's important, because I do think if we are looking to acquire new. Information, it it's through reading, and it's so important that our. Our staff recognizes they're teaching students how to read a scientist, they're teaching students how to read like a historian, um you read primary source documents, but. Um where I thought I was gonna have this big glowing statement, it's just, it's just one item that's separated by an Oxford comma, but it's, but it's important. I I actually, yeah, and I I lost a lot on this one, and I loved it, um I think I I I think I I said it to you in my notes, that it was the most brutally pleasant interaction I'd ever had. Because they they were, they were fearless about about picking apart pieces of language, and and it was great, because it reflects a wide range of. Thinking and thinkers.
So what are our next steps on this one?
So um I I, any input that you guys wanna put in writing, like, I I jotted down some notes, um but anything that you really want us to address, um please. Reach out to me, C C, Megan as uh committee chair, I'm sure Brian will wanna be part of the conversation, but I I I feel like. I can give you something clean that's ready to go for a first reading, either on the sixteenth, or if we wanna um give people a little more time to digest it to a first reading. At the October. Small number date. Uh meeting.
Oh, do it at the first October meeting?
We could do that as well.
The action item section beginning.
That's the one.
Is that what people feel comfortable with, or? Yeah, okay.
So so we'll look, yeah, so first reading for October seventh, because that'll give you a chance to let this, let this settle, if you wanna watch the video again and again, you have time to do that too.
Yeah, I think it's close. Uh I think it's very close.
I agree.
So um I know Brian got nervous when he saw duties of the president on here, but it just so happened, I was going through. The next item that will be up for discussion, which is the master list of policies, to see what um could be due for review, hadn't been looked at in a long time. That one stood out to me, because we haven't reapproved it or done anything with it since two thousand and twelve. And it seemed like a fairly easy one, because the duties of the president really haven't changed that much, so it was in backup just for review. Um I wanted to throw that, I I was hoping to identify a couple more, but I'll tell you why I didn't, we got to discussion number three, um. But I thought this oh zero one seven one could go for just a review and reapproval um. For first reading and then second reading at the next business meeting, so any comments on that policy, or changes that you think might need to be discussed on that?
The school warrants is pretty interesting.
Did you know you have to sign all those?
Well, I I read it when uh first became president, but I've never signed any school warrants, so I guess that's a good thing.
I was a little one, I was wondering about the um language around appoint. I was a little one, I was wondering about the um language around appointing the committees and serving as the next committee uh. Committee member ex officio, but we do still use the committees on a kind of ad hoc basis, so I think. Okay, well, if you see I have any questions about that one before the next meeting, let me know, otherwise we'll put it on as is um just for a reapproval. Um, at the next meeting.
Yeah, I'll I would just prefer that for number ten. Says confer with superintendent crucial matters that may occur between board meetings, a relative pronoun there reflect. Their common American usage, which should be that rather than which. I'm gonna be quiet now.
I'll I'll leave that one to you to fix. That, not which, that's all he said. Okay, so um. Ms. Og was very was kind enough to um share with myself and Dr. Portis the list of um policies. Uh, it's like a master list of policies that includes the date of the last draft estimate update when the B O. He last adopted or when I guess it was originally adopted um and then the last review date and some of them do go back pretty far. If there haven't been any stress estimate updates, it's really not that big a deal, but it's just good practice to go through them every now and then. Um, reapprove them, make sure that. Um, particularly for ones that are not mandated policies that it still reflects our practices and our philosophy. Um, and our mission, but as I started going through that, I just I realized that um the list itself needs some cleaning up. So that's something that um I'm going to look at and Dr. Portis, I'll work with you and Mrs. Og to make sure that we can. Um, make sure. Uh, I think some names may have changed from what's in here and things like that, so we'll clean the list up. Um, and then I would like to get into establishing a regular review of policies, get back into that, so we had kind of fallen out of that. Um, habit. The one question I had to see if anyone had an opinion on was. Um, do you want to see a chunk of policies that are all from the same section of our policy manual? So we take on three or four that are from the student section and then we later take on some that are from the teacher section. Or do you want a smattering that are from all different sections of the policy manual if we were to do this on say a monthly basis?
I would think section by section.
Section by section.
There's a reason why they're organized that way, so review them that way.
The only thing we might do is lump teacher and stat, teaching staff and sports staff, like there's two sections where there's a lot of duplicate policies, so it might bring those together. But yeah, we can do them section by section then. Yeah, exactly right, they're just the same with different titles. Okay, so um we'll do some work on that and get it set up. With uh some sort of schedule that can be passed on to the future policy chair. And cell phone policy, um there was a memo that came out from the New Jersey Department of Education. Of considerations for the development of your policies to address cell phone usage in schools. Obviously, we come um is becoming a bigger and bigger issue, they reference some studies and some research in there. Um, and we do have a policy in place, we have. Procedures in place at the different schools that are outlined in the handbooks. Um, but Dr. Portis, I'll throw it over to you if there's something you wanted to add to. The existence of this memo.
Yeah, and and I'm glad that we we were able to um bring it to the table for this um. The memo itself doesn't really state. Particularly strong position, um which I guess is good, it provides us some local control over how we want to respond. But this is something that we we definitely saw there being a ground swell, um the the book anxious generation from Jonathan Haidt. Has gained a lot of traction, um it was something. I I had included a review from Ms. Abrams and Dr. Sheridan about it, one of my updates, a couple of parents actually got back to me. Um, and probably regretted it because I've been bombarding them with emails ever since, but. Um, there was a very good podcast that he did about, I think it was last week that. Went over what he felt very simple solutions to help. Schools better support kids. Um, and ultimately what it comes down to is that the the kids, is that students and to a degree staff, but more so students. Are are so compelled to look at these pathologically. Um, they get pulled in by the alerts, the updates, there's this incredible fear of missing out, so I was glad that. You saw that study from Rutgers about students having access to their phones during class. Um, how that disrupted their learning experiences. And um I'm I'm open about it when when we were developing a cell phone policy for the middle school, I wanted us to take advantage of the opportunity to. Teach kids how to use their cell phones responsibly. Um, it was in retrospect, one of the. Dumber positions I've ever taken because it was very much an esoteric idea like, hey, we can teach them this. It but it's just not a and there's a grip that these things have on on young users and so. With that said, I'm actually very happy that the state, it's towards the bottom of the memo, um but that the state. Is welcoming input from us. Um, they're calling it the social media commission, I think cell phone use goes beyond social media as well. But tha- that is what they're calling it, so I'll I'll respect that. And I do think we should encourage people to offer their input as parents, educators, as as board members, as administrators, teachers. I I I think it's really, really important. But that said, I I do think that we should look at what are our expectations for kids with phones and. Reality is, we we don't want people texting their kids during school, we don't want kids checking in on. Instagram during school, like we 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 want it to be that the focus is on. What's in the moment, I think if we were, and I'm I'm gonna dread. Saying this out loud, but I think I think if we were to set up a committee for the community and give people an opportunity to talk about it and. Address how we can help kids, families with with this issue, I think it might go a long way.
I think that's a great idea. Uh, I read an article in a school leader, I guess was the last month's episode, that there was different districts doing different things, one of them was they have these. These uh. Cubbies in one school district where they put the phone in there. When they go into school or when they go into class, they're not allowed to have it. And then there was another uh district that had bags that the bags closed and the student still has the phone, I think they call you on their bags or something like that. But the they're allowed to walk around with the bag, but they can't get access to the phone and it's similar to something that I had to deal with when. I went to see Joe Rogan at Madison Square Garden, which was was lovely. And uh they gave me a bag to put my phone in, so you couldn't record the event and you still had your phone, but the phone was essentially you couldn't get at it. Um, I've read studies that even having your phone at work. If it's face down on your table, it distracts you even if you're looking at it. If it's in the next room, you know it's there, distracts you, if it's in your car, it's less of a distraction, so it's like the. Basically comes down to the further you can get away from your phone. The better off you're gonna be as far as when you're trying to learn something in focus, so I am totally in favor of putting out a uh. Survey to the parents and I would also be totally in favor of keeping the phones out of the kids' hands when they come into the building, which I think is. The policy now as far as the handbook, they're supposed to put it in their locker. And they're not having it in class, so right there, that's what we should be doing.
They had the shoe shoe holders in high school.
I will say, I I said to some of you today, uh, the New York Times puts out a podcast called The Daily. Um, today's daily is completely focused on cell phone use in schools. Uh, really worth a listen, I think it's about thirty minutes and it doesn't just talk about different counties, different states, how they're handling it. And uh I'm a big proponent of getting rid of the phones entirely till I listen to today's podcast. Um, there was some information about uh students who have the most adult responsibilities. Often do need access to the phone, for example, if they're working. Their hours get changed and they need to know that before, obviously they're at the school, they're caring for elderly. Uh, there may be important messages on there, so there was ta- some talk there about like, how do you still give them access, whether that's in guidance, you know, you have to go to the guidance room. And and guidance offices to open up the phone to look at it, um like a safe space where it's appropriate. Um, maybe during lunch or what whatnot, so they can they can do this, but I I just. I never really thought about how kind of those students with the most adult responsibilities may need access to their phones, so just keeping that in mind as we move forward.
It does seem to, oh, sorry, I was gonna say as a school where. We are one to one school from sixth grade up, so students have another device that they can use for educational purposes, so we're not like eliminating technology from the classroom, but. You know, keeping that in mind, and if there is certain tech that teachers want to use, that yes, maybe is easier done through their own phone, but we can. Bind them the tech and maybe invest in what they want in a different way, whether it's like clicker technology that can be done through the phone book. Or iPads that they use to make videos in the hallways instead of having the kids get their phones out and make videos in the hallways using their iPhones. Um, making sure that we're supporting the educational needs in a way that. The phones can be in the locker and they don't feel like. They need it and they're missing out on, you know, some with method of learning because that device is not in the student's hands.
Yeah, one one thing I want to add to that, and I'm sorry, I meant to say it before is while we have the cell phone policy, we probably should. Inspect to make sure we're not having coaches just because it's easier. Send out text messages to teams, hey, my players, game's canceled today, uh, they can do that through email, through the students' computers. Um, but you know, I think that we maybe just a little more pressure on that policy to say, hey, don't entice the kids to grab your phones. When you can easily email them as well.
It used to be, you know, the principal would make an announcement that the game is canceled today over the P A system. I don't know if we still have a P A system, but. Um, you know, I. I was kinda, I'm kinda on the fence, you know, with this, but. The reality is that there's several states that have changed the laws and I think that we need to be prepared for that. In that sense, right, we don't want to go from zero to a hundred, I think that if we. Work our way towards something like that, something that we want, if we're told what we have to do at some point, that would be easier.
Um, change the laws and. Of getting them away from.
Many of the state laws now are changing that schools are not allowed to have cell.
Oh, yeah.
So um.
So but we kind of have that now, right? Because like in P V, you're supposed to put it in your locker. And then.
Right, we we kind of.
In the high school, you're not supposed to have it either.
But maybe we could also come up with some other ideas, like if. If a parent has to get hold of a kid, but it's not an emergency. Who do they call? Like, do they even know who to call right now? You know what I mean? Like. The main office, do you call the guidance counselor? Like, you know what I'm saying? Like. You don't call me Dr. Portis, you know what I'm saying? So, you know, what is what is the chain of command for them, but. Um. I tell you what, though, you know, I was listening to the podcast today. Uh, while I was getting ready to come here and my incoming freshman heard it and she goes. Well, what am I supposed to do for the first three weeks when I can't find my classroom? I I have everything on my phone. And I said, well, I'll print out something on MapQuest for you. But, you know, I mean, the thing is, is that it it is going, it's not something we can just. Do, it's something we have to train these kids to get because you will have kids that get the shakes. Because all they're worried about is getting their phone. And another thing that, you know, nobody talks about, it would be nice probably for these kids not to have to worry about getting their picture taken. Have, you know, seventy five times a day in the hallway, in a classroom, you know, whatever. That they could just be themselves and not worry about somebody taking their picture every five minutes.
I mean, what more can we do if that's already policy that has to be a locker or what could be?
You know. What is, what's the? Probably like, I answered, put your phone. But. I don't know, I I think, I think especially after hearing that podcast, that. Is something that the state is eventually gonna want to stick their hand to. Government overreach, of course, but why not?
Yeah, they're doing it already, yeah.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're definitely testing the water with this and and. And I I think it's a good thing, um, I I would have preferred something a little more assertive, but but I like that they're at least. Opening up to the conversation and I do like the idea and as I'm saying this, I I should tuck this into my. Update, which is now gonna be about nine pages long, but but I think it's important that people know, like, listen, you you can make your voice heard at state level as well. I'm assuming somebody really is gonna read this. And uh, as you talk about these podcasts, uh it's important to to get the messaging out because it it is very eye open, like even I I have my phone. Over, you know, right next to me here. If this is the dinner table, like there are studies that show like whether it's at home or at a restaurant, how much that diminishes the. Quality and caliber and intensity of conversation that I can maintain. So I think the more awareness that we create for our families, for our kids, for for our staff, I. It it it's really important and that's why I have a note here about sharing with you. Uh, the podcast that I would or really webinar that I was able to observe last week, but I have the recording for it, I think you'll find it interesting, I could push that out to the community. But background in this conversation is is. Is is really important because you you realize. Just how influential. These things are in changing people's habits and now that I've been, it's funny, Sam, you were talking about how like. You're a little more attuned from having listened to that podcast. Um, we we went to DC for a few days and just I was observing how many people I saw walking around like this. And like like just next down, like, no, look up, this is an incredibly beautifully. You know, crafted city, the architecture, everything else, and so. The more the more aware that you become and you start observing people's habits, of course, you observe your own as well. And you know, I'm aware that during a commercial break, I I fall victim to occupied boredom, I'm gonna check out, oh, maybe there's something in Apple news or. There's an email, no, there's not. Change, yeah, but anyway, so I I I think there's a lot here that we could do just to get the conversation going and even if it's not something that's policy. Maybe it's something that's more important, just practice and. I don't know, we communicate that out. I think I just added a lot to my workload and I'm okay with that.
All right, simple policy. All right, that brings us to our second opportunity for public comment, members of the public may speak once for a maximum period of five minutes by the clock during this portion of the meeting. And the public may speak on any topic during their five minutes, if a member of the public. Raises a question, direct that question to the board president and state your name and sign in before we begin.
We don't have a special guest speaker tonight.
All right, moving on to uh unfinished business, any board member with unfinished business? Any board member with new business? Any board member that has an announcement to make?
Um, I don't have an announcement, but uh. It's exciting times, good luck to uh. This teachers, staff, students. Um, in this twenty twenty four, twenty five year. Let's have an outstanding year, this is why we're all here, let's do it.
Like the enthusiasm, Sam, well said.
Let's do it.
Absolutely, get an elevator in this building.
Okay, just um, I'd like to thank all of our custodians. Our secretaries, our support staff, our teachers and our admin team for preparing our schools. For the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year, which I just can't even believe it's the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. Um, best of luck to all of our students, teachers and staff. For an amazing school year may be filled with academic growth and fun-filled memories.
Last Thursday, I attended the uh home opener football game, was a lot of fun, it was beautiful night, great game. Cheerleaders did an amazing job first time out there as well, everybody had a really great time. Um, my ten year old did ask me to pass on the message to the announcer from that evening to learn the difference between. Defense and offense and false start and offsides apparently, I'm just kidding, Mr. Hazler did a fabulous job, but. Um, needs to brush up on those rules from what I am told, uh but other than that fabulous game and. Uh, thanks to everyone who put in the hard work for that.
Yeah. Yeah, I I I know she's, I know exactly what he's talking about.
I was the uh. How's the volume, how's the volume of the?
It is very important to note that I was standing quietly on the sideline, that it was the golden throat of Mr. Hazler that was conducting the announcing, he did a great job. But. Yeah, you can't call false start on the defense, that that's it's offside or a neutral zone violation.
I just want to wish everybody um again, good luck and and more importantly, the uh new staff coming to the harmonic family. Um, picking off their their careers here, um. Good luck and then have fun, a fun place to be.
All right, we do not have reason to go into executive session tonight, so uh is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Good night, everyone, our next meeting will be a regular business meeting at Cedar Crest on September sixteenth, see you all there, good night.